5:45, Monday, June 3rd, 2024. I'll call this special meeting to order of the Peru City Hall Council Chambers. If you would please rise for the pledge of allegiance led by Tim Fisher and remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Brent Wedding.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for your goodness and your mercy toward us. We pray that you would bless these meetings tonight, that you would fill the council with wisdom and understanding, that they would operate with integrity and ethics. Lord, we pray for this city, that you would pour out your blessings upon our small business owners, our schools, our first responders, every area of this city, Lord, that you would bless Peru, Indiana, and that you would help us to be a strong, growing, thriving community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
First item on the agenda for this special meeting, additional appropriation resolution 12-2024. We need a, pardon me, we need to do roll call first.
Anderson? Fisher?
Here.
Huber?
Here.
Murphy?
Here.
Sahaduchne?
Here.
Stevenson?
Here.
Ori?
Here.
Thank you. Once again, the first item in this special meeting is the additional appropriation resolution These are funds in the amount of $130,000 coming from the Cumulative Capital Improvement Fund for various areas, animal control, golf course, and parks. Any discussion regarding this? Council?
I'm wondering if Mayor, if they could maybe give us some detail in terms, I know that kind of a buzzword capital outlays, but exactly where, are we talking about? Equipment, machinery, property, vehicles?
Sure, we can, we can provide that to you. Animal control was for ventilation in their building. Golf course is to replace the roofs on the clubhouse, the middle cart barn, and the storage building. All those, all three of those roofs are currently leaking and need to be repaired or replaced. Also, the overhead doors at the maintenance shop and all three cart barns are not functioning properly. It would be money to replace those as well. There is also money in here for a fence around the maintenance shop at the golf course and a fence around the sand volleyball courts for the parks. That's the $130,000.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. So this is different, this does not come out of the bond that we're going to issue later in the year for the irrigation and other equipment. This comes from a fund for capital improvement for the city. Any further discussion from the council? Do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
I would second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sahaduchne?
Yes.
Stevenson?
No.
Ori?
Yes.
Next item on our special meeting agenda is additional appropriation resolution number This is for the approval of funds for the splash pad. As you recall, this is a DNR 50-50 grant. The city puts in $750,000, DNR, $750,000, and we can get our splash pad on the Riverwalk. This money will come out of ceded funds and was talked about during the previous administration. We just need to approve that money tonight. Any discussion from the council?
Where's that going to be? Is that going to be between the shelter house and the pickleball court?
Just to the west, just to the west of Miami Sport.
Okay.
And I'll just point out that the mayor had provided all of us with an artist rendition of what it's to look like when it's complete.
Any more discussion from the council?
If the funding is approved, when do they plan to have it completed?
We are currently waiting on one final signature. This is a federally backed project through the DNR. We are waiting on one signature from the National Park Service. They have assured us that we will get it, it just hasn't arrived yet. We've asked for help from Senator Young's office to apply whatever pressure they can to get that signature to us, but yeah, that's what we're waiting on.
Thank you.
No more discussion, I need a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sahaduchne?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes the special meeting. I need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn special meeting.
Second.
This motion is adjourned. We'll reconvene at 6 o'clock for a regular meeting. June 3rd, I'll call this regular meeting to order of the city of Peru Common Council and Peru City Hall Council Chambers. First thing on the agenda is an amendment to the agenda for tonight. The amendment reads to correct ordinance 10-2024, Section 2, to replace planned commission with common council. Need a motion to amend tonight's agenda with that correction.
I make a motion that we amend the, amend the agenda.
Second.
To ordinance 10-2024.
We have a second.
Second.
And roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sahaduchne?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori?
Yes.
Thank you. The agenda has been amended with that correction. Next item is the reading and correcting of the Journal of the Minutes of our regular meeting on May 6th.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes as written and suspend the rules.
Second.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sahaduchne?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the committee liaison reports. Councilwoman Murphy?
The Parks Board met on May 9th. There is no clubhouse report. Cliff was working on a whole lot of stuff, including the Miami Sport, where they're going to pressure wash seal and get new mulch. They were wrapping up the sand volleyball courts, which aside from the fencing, I do believe is functional. Still working on repair and maintenance of equipment. They are still working on the bylaws and there will be a pickleball tournament held by the Kiwanis in September.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ori?
Okay, the cable board, we met on May 13th. We voted Dave Moon as chairperson. We're looking into new cameras and sound, new sound system. So, and then we're still needing a couple more appointees, so we are looking for some people to add to the, to the board. As far as the planning commission, we are going to discuss that tonight regarding the rezoning for the gravel pit. And then the Civic Center, we met on May 30th. The new flooring is complete. They're working on getting the painting done. And once all of those renovations are done, we are planning to do an open house to show the renovations and also because of now the alcohol being allowed at the Civic Center. So trying to get the Civic Center promoted and out there for the public to see.
Thank you.
One thing, Chief Dean, do you have any updates on the ambulance for the fire?
Yes, it should be here sometime October timeframe. The specs have been rewritten, I just approved the graphics for it last week, so hopefully we should get an update, but the projected date is 1st of October.
Perfect, thank you. That's all I have, Chief.
Thank you. Councilman Fisher?
Attended the Board of Works meetings on 7th and 21st. You know, approval of payment and claims and approvals of various street closures and fire, various police and fire personnel changes. Also attended the Peru Utilities Board meetings on May 1st and May 15th. Among things discussed was engineering and progress and timelines for the sewage overflow project that's, that's in process. Miami County Economic Development, attended their elected officials of council meeting on the 13th. Presentation was made by Scott McCauley with Make My Move program. In addition, there was economic development activities, updates, what's in the pipeline, what kind of potential activities are out there. Attended the Makita Board meeting at Grissom on the 8th. Same, same thing. Miami County Recycling District, I attended that board meeting on the 20th. There was approval of minutes as well as dealing with the wastewater drainage issues at the building and new signage for that facility along Logan Sport Road, as well as the mayor had shared that he had found a location that he's working on to add two additional bins within the city for Peru citizens to use. Rediscover downtown Peru. Those folks handle, I went to the board meeting on the 16th, those folks handle the second Saturday events, the Cold Porter Festival and, and the facade program for the various Tax abatement review committee, that's not until June 20th, so we'll report next month on that. May 8th, attended the Miami County Plan Commission to listen to oral comments made concerning proposed amendment to ordinances regulating nudity for future developments in all zone districts. May 21st, I attended the Mental Health Awareness Month Merrill Proclamation hosted by the Miami County United Way Foundation. May 30th, attended the ribbon cutting for the new 4C eight, 4C health facility that's out here north of town. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Sahaduchne?
Miami County Council met on May 14th. General appropriations at around 22,000, replacement of panic buttons at 22,000, new ovens for the jail at 26,000. Local health maintenance fund is at 30,000. Tax abatement requests for approval for Spectrum RX expansion in the Grissom Industrial Park and sheriff salary update to 100,000. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Huber?
Yeah, went down, talked to Brian at the street department. They were actually striping some of the streets, they're striping Canal Street this morning. So they're working on that. They're prepping the amphitheater for new asphalt and trying to get that done so it will be ready for the 4th of July celebration. Other than that, everything's pretty much normal operations down there. I did go out and see Kelly at the airport today. They're having a safety meeting on June 10th. Other than that, there's not a lot going on.
Thank you. Councilman Stevenson?
Peru, Peru Utilities approved the third quarter 2024 electric rates tracker adjustment. Bowen Engineering awarded the wastewater long-term control plan, GSC, and Amy Miller and Cornerstone granted the management contract for the wastewater project. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Seeing nothing under unfinished business, we'll move to new business. One of the things that I enjoy seeing at our council meetings is the recognition of those who receive promotions or new positions. Tonight, we're going to swear in Keith Smith to the rank of lieutenant with the Peru Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, thank you for allowing us to be here and indulging us. I know this is probably about the second or third time that we've been here this year to celebrate a milestone in a, in an officer's career. And this milestone is for Keith Smith, who was recently promoted to lieutenant. We, we are utilizing the city council meeting because, as you can see behind me, there are a number of people here. So it's a great opportunity for the public to get to know our officers and to also share in celebrating their, their accomplishments. So tonight, we're going to swear in ceremoniously Lieutenant Keith Smith, who was just promoted from being sergeant. He is the lieutenant now on second shift, so from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM, he's in charge. Keith, as of the 22nd of this month, is going to be a 10-year veteran of the Peru Police Department. He comes to us from northern Indiana with a, with a degree, bachelor's degree from Indiana University at Bloomington. He currently also serves as our canine handler. He is a field training officer. He is our TASER instructor. He also serves as the coordinator for Operation Pullover, which is administered through the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute. And he's, he was voted by his peers to be a representative on our pension board, which does all the hiring for our department. He's widely respected by his peers at the Peru Police Department. He's regularly called upon to serve and assist other agencies. Most recently, he's been utilized by the United States Air Force for some details out at Grissom Air Force Base. And tonight, he is here with his family, his wife, Mackenzie, and his daughters, Braylon and Hallie. And so we will now administer the oath. I, Keith Smith.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the state of Indiana?
The Constitution of the state of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
And impartially?
And impartially.
Discharge the duties as lieutenant of the Peru Police Department? For the city of Peru?
The city of Peru.
According to the law?
According to the law.
And the best of my ability?
And the best of my ability.
So.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item of business on our agenda is resolution 14-2024, resolution establishing a rate tracking factor for the municipal electric utility, the city of Peru, Indiana. Need a motion to consider?
Make a motion, we consider resolution 14-2024.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sahaduchne?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori?
Yes.
Evening. Thank you, Mayor. So as we do all, every quarter, we have the rate tracking factor for the electric. This is the factor of the cost of energy and electricity for what the, our customers use, what utilities use and the city uses. It is only for the fluctuation in fuel costs and basically the energy costs that's a straight pass-through through IMPA. This quarter, believe it or not, we have a reduction. On the residential side, it's about $3.06 per thousand kilowatts. Usually about this time of year, we have a small reduction because through the winter, the energy prices, they fluctuate a lot, but they start to settle down. But, and that's why we have more of a fluctuation up on the energy prices in the fall and the winter because you're, you're getting all the summer costs and fluctuations, so. But this is a pretty good one, about $3, $3.06 per thousand kilowatts on the residential side. And like I always try to do, give you some comparisons to Peru Utilities. Duke Energy for 1,000 kilowatts, the first 1,000 kilowatts is $139, 6% more than Peru Utilities. Hartley RMC is $153, that's 17% higher than Peru Utilities. Miami Cass RMC is $144 for the first 1,000 kilowatts, 10%. NIPSCO is $188, NIPSCO Energy, not gas. That's 44% higher than Peru. AES Indiana, which is around Indianapolis, is 15% higher than Peru at $150.91.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion regarding this? If not, we need a motion to approve the resolution.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the resolution.
I second that.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sahaduchne?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is ordinance 10-2024. This is an ordinance to rezone in the city of Peru. We need a motion to consider.
I make a motion to consider ordinance 10-2024.
Second.
Roll call.
Huber?
Yes.
Ori?
Did she say me? Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sahaduchne?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Haley Shuck. I'm the zoning administrator for the city of Peru. The planning commission had a meeting on May 28th, 2024, to discuss the rezone for the parcel commonly known as East Wabash Road. The applicant would like to rezone this parcel from an R1 to an A3. The applicant would also like to operate a mineral extraction on this parcel. According to the zoning code and the primary uses, mineral extraction has to be in an A2, A3, or an I2 with a special exception. At the meeting, there were people that were there for and against this rezone. After listening to both sides and discussion, the planning commission voted to give an unfavorable recommendation with a vote of three yeses and five noes.
I recognize that this ordinance, up for consideration and discussion, has proponents and opponents. If you are invited to speak, please come to the podium and state your name before beginning. I ask that your comments be clear, concise, and please limit your comments to five minutes each. We will ask for the proponent side to come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, city council. My name is Josh Petrinio. I'm here on behalf of my client, Mike Boyer and Kokomo Gravel. I, I don't want to spend too much time going over generalities. I think most of the people who are here are quite familiar with the issues as I, as I'm getting set up. Once again, we were before the planning commission received an unfavorable recommendation. We then proceeded to the BZA for consideration of our special exception and a couple of our variances that we would need in order to do the extraction, the mineral extraction facility. They ended up, after hearing a number of arguments, tabled that to a later date, I think under the understanding that they wanted to kind of see what the, what the city council would do with that. So this falls upon the city council. Obviously, there's significant interest in this, and at the end of the day, somebody's going to be unhappy with whatever this council decides. And I think that the, the way that we think about this is that it's a balancing of interests. You've got to balance the interests that we believe represent the greater good. We think that this operation is going to benefit Peru, it's going to benefit Miami County. These types of materials are used in just about every project that, that is going to come before this board and sing its praises about a new development, a new business, anything. Gravel is used to, to be at the foundation of every single one of those projects. Over the last 15, since 2006, there's been 215,000 tons of this material has been used by both Miami County and the city of Peru. The next close option is to purchase this in Logan Sport. Based on our numbers, we think that the cost savings to the city and the county would average somewhere around, at a minimum, $73,000 a year. If my PowerPoint is coming up, no matter. We're going to provide each of the members of the city council kind of a, a map showing the layout of the proposed operation. As Haley indicated, this is currently zoned R1.
Thank you.
Over on the east side of Peru, outside of the municipal boundaries, but inside the So this is a sand and gravel pit. It is nothing like a limestone quarry or anything like that. We're going to talk a little bit later about the fact that we're not de-watering. We think that that really kind of gets us around any sort of issues. There's been a lot of discussions related to the potential for draining wells. Put simply, an operation that doesn't de-water stands to pose no risk to nearby wells. However that says, we realize that not everybody wants this in their backyard. So you'll, you'll see on the plan there, kind of, we'll take you through why we've had to set it up here on, on page one this way. So looking up in the northwest corner, that's where we've got the entrance, the ingress and egress. We tried to take that as far away as possible from the, the neighbor to the northeast. So that gets us over to the northwest corner where trucks are going to be entering and exiting. Now, when materials are offloaded from this site, they're primarily going to head east on Wabash Road to the other Kokomo facility. So you're not going to have a lot of traffic coming out, going left, heading into the, into town here. That's also going to be set up with wheel wash to do the best we can to, to, you know, clean up tires, make sure they're not dirtying up the road. In addition, the, the project was going to require a six-foot In addition, the, the project was going to require a six-foot-high berm. We've proposed to make that eight. Up there in the northeast corner, they're going to be probably higher to create as much of a buffer for the other properties as, as we can create. Now, I want to turn to the, to the second page real quick before I bring in Mike to kind of explain a little bit more about the, the phases of the operation. But page number two there, you'll see what type of a dredger they're proposing to use. I think this is really important for two reasons. Number one, this shows you visually what kind of machinery is going to operate there. And you see it scoops through the material underwater. So it's not creating a lot of dust, it's mitigating the noise to some degree. Most importantly, this explains why we're not de-watering. Okay? You don't have to get the water out of there in order to extract the materials. Now, a lot of people are going to come up here and ask questions about the current Kokomo gravel operation. Simple, this technology wasn't available, wasn't easily, easily purchased, this type of a dredger in 2005, when de-watering was required at the current Kokomo gravel site. The third page there is just kind of some drawings we made off of the elevate. The blue represents, all the way to the left, the first phase. That's where the, the dredger is going, going to be located in one of two areas. And if you flip back to the first page, you'll see the green and yellow machine on the left-hand side, that's represented by the blue circle. And then when we've got the flat, we've got flagged what's called the dead man, which is going to be the opposite end of that line. And so that's the red lines going out to that. So that shows kind of where we're going to be in this operation. Do also want to point out, inside of the eight-foot-high berm is going to be an access road throughout much of it, so that's going to provide additional barrier. But I'll let Mike go now a little bit to discuss kind of what the phases are.
Mike Boyer, Kokomo Gravel. Phase one is going to be stripping the dirt, get enough dirt to build the berm around there to get it access so that people can't see inside. Also build the road, the ramp to get to Wabash Road. This is going to be phase one, and as we do phase one, we just move on to phase two. There's going to be no de-watering this site, there's no blasting, there's no underwater mining under people's property or nothing like that.
Mike, could you talk a little louder? I can't hear what you're saying.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's a little better.
Okay. Phase one, we'll be taking enough dirt off to build the berms and build the ramp and get the stockpile area where we're going to stockpile material after we're done. There's going to be three to six, eight foot of overburden. And then after the overburden's taken off, we'll take the, the material above the water table off, and then when to get the water table, water table's about 10 foot from the testicles we dug. After the, to get the material above the water off, we'll bring that Skyline machine in, you got a picture of, to take the water or get the material out of the water. So the blue, the blue square there is kind of the, the machine. The dead man is, it don't run, the machine's going to be kind of in the middle of the field, away from, trying to get it as away from, as far as away from the residents as possible, cut down on the noise. After it's excavated, mined, like Josh said, we're going to haul it east to the pit where we're at now to process it. There's not going to be any processing plant, the plant you see there now, it's not going to be down at the location that we're talking about. So, any questions for me?
So will there be any access other than off of the Wabash Road?
No. There's no, there'll be no truck traffic on Paw Paw Pike. As you can see, the berm is clear along Paw Paw Pike. I've had way too many phone calls already about trucks running down there over the years, and I, I'm not going to put any access on Paw Paw Pike because I don't need to.
And there is no purpose for de-watering whatsoever with this system?
No.
What are your hours of operation?
During the, when they come in the mine, the Skyline guys like to work six to six, and that'll be like November through March, and then like six to two on Saturdays. Through the summer, it'll probably be cut back to seven to five, Monday through Friday, and Saturdays is, is an option, but Saturdays would be a shorter day than, than Monday through Friday. Dirt, there will no be, there's nothing going on at night, around the clock, nothing like that.
Is there any like big lights over the land, like, you know?
No, they may put a, they may put a, a light up, a, you know, light tower, when it's dark to get started in the mornings, and they shut them off obviously when it gets daylight, but...
I think there is one in that picture.
Oh, okay, yeah, I see it though. But no big permanent lighting all the way around it?
No, sir.
Any other questions?
I, I wanted to ask a question.
Okay.
Which I, I know the answer to, but I want to make sure that everyone knows the answer to. I understand that there's statute in the state of Indiana, that if you do something that affects the well, and I understand there was questions the other night, I was there, it does affect residents' well, there's a statute in the state of Indiana to protect that resident. I know it has to go through a DNR, through the DNR, but I want to let, you to let people know that that is in fact there for their...
Yeah, I contacted DNR because I knew this is going to be an issue from past experience, and asked them to send me the code to protect the residents around, but that's the code. But if you don't de-water, you don't need the code. So I don't...
I have a question.
Okay.
I'd like to know how you reacted with the Peru Planning Commission voted unfavorably for this project, okay? And when you're saying, if you're saying you're not going to be traveling Paw Paw Pike, there's something else going on. So how did you respond to the fact that the Peru Planning Commission, who are somewhat experts, who voted, I believe there were five noes?
Well, it's...
So how do you respond to that?
How do I respond to that? It's un, it was an unfavorable vote in our favor. I think after, there was some people that may have not had the clear picture, there may not be a clear understanding of what the, what we're asking for setbacks, and there's a big thing on 100-foot setback versus 1,000-foot setback. Some of the, the residents was under, under the assumption that we can go into their property and into their yards. We cannot go on somebody else's property and get material from their yards. I don't know where they come up with that, it just, it doesn't, doesn't go. We can't do that. So it's, it was unfavorable, you know? Did I like it? No, I didn't like it. But, so, I mean, something to keep in bear in mind, there's, there's 24, there's 24 petitioners turned, signed, turned in. We got copies of, of 23. There was one petitioner withdrew. Out of that 23, there's 12 of them that lives west of Miami Trucking, that will have little to no impact on, from this project, okay? There's only four out of them 23 that actually touched the property. One of them, four, father used to own Miami Trucking. The other one is sitting on the property that sold the piece of property, the Hudson's family sold the property, staying in a fifth-wheel trailer. They don't actually own that property, they're just staying there. The rest, and, and the other, the other one was Mr. Catton's. So, and the rest of them is closer to our pit, original pit that we got now. So there's a big, a big myth of wells that we drain the wells. Back in 2010, they took us down to DNR and said that we drained their wells, because they didn't have any of static water levels before we started de-watering at the current location. They got static water levels from 2000, or from 2006 to 2009 of several people that had static water levels, and the water levels didn't drop, static water didn't drop below 25 feet. There's a lot of wells out there that's only about 30-foot deep. As Mr. Constable stated, that Matt Overton's well went dry, but it's only 30-foot deep. So there's also about 14 wells that've been replaced before we even started de-watering. Some of them's closer to west of Miami Trucking before some of them even went dry, supposedly closer to the pit. Now, if you want to get into that later and go through one by one, we can. I've got the documentations to show how many people went well. Peru, the city of Peru has two significant withdrawal wells in the solar fields, that's a lot closer to some of the people's wells went dry on the west side of Miami Trucking than on I Am. So to sit here and say that Kokomo Gravel caused all the wells to go dry in that area is not a true statement.
What was the end result when they took you down to the DNR?
They, the petitioners, Mr. Constable spoke for all the petitioners, and he withdrew their, they withdrew the petition with no recourse to Kokomo Gravel.
Can I answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Sorry, I got more than you, probably got more than you barged for.
I did want to add something. Okay. I think, number one, the Peru Planning Commission, I think that carries some weight. Now, let me finish, okay? Their recommendation, unfavorable, I think that carries some weight, okay? And it seems like to me, are you, are you looking at the disruption that this is going to cause to the people? I mean, you know, the lives are being disrupted, investing, their lives, their property, you know? Is, is it worth that? I mean, to pursue this project? I mean, there, there's going to be disruption.
Well...
I don't care how you look at it.
If I can, a, a couple things. You know, we wouldn't be here unless this was a, a site of last resort, you know? The, the way that the real estate market is, you know, first of all, we've got to go where the materials are in the ground. We look for other sites, east side, west side, north side. The way the real estate market is, we don't necessarily have our pick of what would be the ideal location to disrupt as few people as possible. We think that with the property that was available, that also, it can, where the minerals can be extracted at a cost-effective way, unfortunately, this is the best situation. We wouldn't be here asking for a disruption if we had no other option. Additionally, what, what, what I believe the, the Plank Commission failed to consider was a lot of the information that we brought that had a Realtor speak with experience in these types of, I guess disruptions, for lack of a better word, and the, the fact that he sees no evidence that these will drag down property values. And, you know, unfortunately, we presented a significant amount of evidence on that, and the Plank Commission, you know, and, and people who are in opposition to this simply say they're, they're not going to believe that. And at a certain point, we ask the question, you know, we, we bring all this evidence, we, we follow what the, the statutory factors are supposed to be, and I, I don't know what else we can do. You know, we can present the evidence, and we let the Plank Commission or the various boards decide the way to give that evidence.
Now, thanks for your point.
I would like to add something. And this is in no way an insult to anyone on this council or anyone on the Planning Commission. We're just people that, we're just people that got elected into a position. The people on the Planning Commission are people that got appointed into a position. I don't think there's anyone of all of us that is an expert at this, what's going on in this situation. So for me to take the recommendation of a group of people that I don't feel are any more qualified to make a decision than I am is hard. I don't... So hold on. I'm, what I'm saying is, I think there were some people that misunderstood the recommendation. I have more to say in a minute, but to say that they're a field of experts, I think is a misrepresentation of what they are. They're appointed people trying to help make decisions with good judgment, just like we are.
And as Bobby said, none of us were experts, but I took my time to go figure out, like, all the complaints that I had read on Facebook, you know, my property value. You go to Rock Hollow out there, right across the road with all the blasting and the dust and everything, they're still developing out there, so obviously it hasn't hurt that. Mr. Boyer has another pit, Kokomo, went to it. There's a million-dollar home building on the driveway to that property, so I don't really see where that was relevant. And then when all the stuff on Facebook about the blasting and the dust, like what they have at West Plains and going towards Wabash, well, none of those things are relevant, you know? We're not blasting out there, they're not having all those things. Let me say, yet, they can't. I mean, you don't blast gravel. I think that's the misunderstanding. People, limestone and gravel are two completely different processes. You don't blast gravel. You dig it out of the ground and it comes out the way it is. And when you're digging out of a hole of water, the dust isn't an issue. The processing, I already said that if this big plant was in front of my house, making all this noise grinding these rocks, I wouldn't want it there. But after speaking to Mr. Boyer of what the process would be, it's taking it out of the ground, which if you drove out there and listened to any of this while it was going on, you couldn't hardly hear it with the wind has rolled up in your truck. And if it's all going west, all the traffic that everybody was complaining about in town is irrelevant because the majority of it's going to another plant that's currently there. And, you know, for the Planning Commission to say, well, we don't, we're not favorable on this, but we would be favorable for another, like, development, so if they wanted to put a distribution hub out there, talk about traffic, that's 24 hours a day. Like, you're going to have semis up and down Main Street, and nobody's going to say, no, we don't want a distribution hub in Peru, but we're going to pick and choose what somebody does with their property. I think that that's where we're going wrong, is telling somebody, we can't do this with the property that they own. I mean, and then to just turn around later and somebody else, Mr. Boyer sells it and somebody else buys, says, we're going to put a UPS hub out there. Everybody's going to be like, yeah, now we got more jobs. Well, we just changed it for one person, but not another one. So that's the part that I struggle with, and I went through every complaint everybody's had and went and done my own homework, and I've yet to see any of those being relevant and with the wells. If you don't de-water, I talked to my well guy, it has nothing to do with it. So like, that should not even have been a topic of discussion, and it sounded like the Planning Commission, that was the majority of the discussion. Well, that's not relevant. If you don't pull the water out of the ground, the wells are not going to be dry. And if they are, everybody's covered. Mr. Boyer has to pay for them. I mean, there's state statutes that tells you that.
You said it, we will remember.
That's on record.
Litigation.
I mean, how many people have went out and talked to the well companies, in fact, figured this out, that said that it would actually drain their well if you do not pull water out of the ground? And the well company said, if you don't pull water out of the ground, they're going to drain your well. How is that possible? If you don't remove water, how would your water table change? Gravel doesn't change your water table.
If you dig, if you dig...
If you dig, it stays the same water level, water seeks its own level.
Okay, we'll, we'll all get a chance to...
For 109 years.
Excuse me.
This guy's been in this for 109 years, so...
You'll get your opportunity, please.
I'm done.
Thank you.
Okay. We're just going to submit these documents.
Okay.
Summary of the Minnesota DNR study, coming to that conclusion of essentially saying water's not pumped out, or sand and gravel pit does not impact wells.
And I think that's a lot, the sand and gravel pit makes a definite difference. Digging in the dirt, it definitely makes a difference.
Could you please explain what you just handed out?
As we discussed at the Plank Commission, this is a summary of a publication that's available online. The, the, how to access that is right here. It was published, it was a study done by the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources that essentially came to the conclusion it impacted water impacts on, on all sorts of mining operations. But the takeaway for us is that it concluded, sand and gravel operations that don't de-water do not impact wells. And the previous packet was the, the state statute on the recourse for small well users who think that they've been impacted. Certainly. We'll see the mic.
Thank you. And do we have a representative opposing to speak?
I would like to speak, please.
Are you speaking for the group or individually?
I, I'm, I'm speaking for a few people, but others would like to speak as many as I can.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before the public comes up, do, can we, are we open for discussion yet, or will that be after?
I mean, you're open up at any point.
Yeah, you can have a discussion now.
I would like to say something, if you don't mind, before you, you get started. So, and I had to write this down because I've been working on this for a few days, and I've been really struggling, and I've, I've actually lost sleep over it, believe it or not. It's, you know, I knew there was going to be situations like this when I joined and got elected onto the City Council. And I knew there were going to be times when we were going to have to make decisions that were going to be unpopular with people. And I don't like that. I, I like, I like people to like me, you know? I don't like people to not like me, but anyway. So I've spent a lot of time driving back and forth out there. I went an hour and a half ago, well, an hour and a half before the meeting, I was sitting out there on my motorcycle, just looking at the property and thinking about it. I went and saw Danny Sparks the other day, and I sat in his driveway, and we sat in the chairs, and we looked at the property. I understand that you... I understand that you don't want a gravel pit in your yard. I looked at Elevate Parcel, and my number is a little bit different than Michael's, but, you know, I was just looking at homes, homes that are actually adjacent properties to the, the site. And I'm talking about the people that are also across the street, not just attached. So I guess adjacent is not maybe the right word. There were nine homes that I saw that had, were directly connected around. Of those homes, seven of them actually had a view that I think they would either, Danny would have to look out his back window, but the rest of the people could look out their front window and they could see the pit. They could see the operation. I get that. There were 25 petitions. Of those 25 petitions, only seven people could even see the pit. The, if you go down to the east, there's a tree line that comes between where Doug Kiefer lives and where Larry Catton lives, there's a tree line that comes down, goes straight south, cuts across. Nobody to the east of that can see that pit from their house. Because there's a tree line, it blocks the view. You can see it if you come down the road, but sitting on your front porch, you look over, maybe in the fall, but, but, there is a tree line.
Trees are coming down.
Okay. So, so I get that, but there is blockage, there's whatever. So, bear with me a second. The discussion about the, the wells going dry, what I heard was that 12 wells went dry. And, but what I never did hear in any of that discussion was when they went dry. Did they all go dry within a week of each other? Or was one this year, this month, this date, and the other one was a year later?
About eight months.
Over eight months?
Yes. And because the wells were at different levels, is the reason it took so long for it to happen.
So, another question, I guess I would ask you, Mr. Constable, why did you withdraw your complaint if you had a legitimate complaint?
I didn't withdraw my complaint. The DNR told me because they didn't have a static rip level before they started digging, that they could not definitively say that Kokomo gravel took our water.
Okay.
Because they did not have that, they've got 400,000 wells on registration, but they could not find one in our area to get a static water level, according to Mr. Bosch at DNR.
So at that time, they, they didn't have the, the records to conclude that Kokomo gravel was responsible?
They didn't have the baseline to start.
But today, they do. So we're not worrying about that because we're not de-watering today, right? The pit, you're just not going to de-water.
It's a whole different kind of ballgame on the second pit than the first pit.
So I've heard a lot of rumors and conversations that have taken place, and we all have, we've all heard all these rumors. And some of them are unfavorable to some of, me included. I've heard that Mr. Boyer made a very, very reasonable offer to the folks on the, on the northeast side that owned the house on top of that hill. An offer that I would, I would never probably have passed up. But there were.
Where you live.
I would love to live in your house.
Please, please respect Mr. Huber. You get a chance, when you, when you can, you come up and talk.
But I understand that he made a very concentrated effort to accommodate you guys. The perfect solution would have been if he could have just expanded his operation to the property immediately to the west of him. He could have just took his excavator, just started reaching over and started digging. But as said the other day, that property had been in this lady's family for 100 years and it's not for sale. But they had negotiated a price. So it's either for sale or it's not for sale.
Correction.
That's not what you said the other day?
That's me. I did not negotiate a final price.
No, I know you didn't, but there was negotiations.
Clarification, there's a difference.
Well, if something's not for sale, it's not negotiated. If something is for sale, then people negotiate and try to come together. If that had worked, we wouldn't be sitting here talking about this right now.
Don't put blame on me, Mr. Huber.
I think you're putting it on us. But anyway.
I have another thing to say. When you come to present, you know, to us here at the city council, and we haven't even made a vote yet, but I feel as though there are several people in the crowd that are almost attacking us. We haven't even made a vote yet. So I just, I guess I'm not quite understanding that when we've not even, nobody knows what our votes are, what any one of us believe up here. So I guess, I guess my view of it is, is maybe don't come up here, like, attacking the council when we have not even voted on this yet.
Hey, thanks.
Thank you. And I'll say one more time, Mr. Huber, Councilman Huber is stating his opinion on this very important resolution tonight, to rezone, this ordinance to rezone. And you will get a chance to come up and give us your opinion as well. So please contain your outbursts and listen to Mr. Huber until he's finished.
And I've got a little more to go. It's not too much. So I just found out about a, an acronym called NIMBY. And it's, it means not in my backyard. And we all want progress, but we don't want it in our backyard. I would say every hog operation, every chicken, egg ranch, whatever, chicken farm, every landfill, has had someone that lives near it or by it, or whatever, north, south, east or west, that did not want it to be there. I know that when Peru started working on the apartment complex down on Canal Street, people didn't, there were remonstrators, we don't want that there. Man, I got a beautiful view. I see the deer out here in the field, I can see the trees, the river, I can see the eagles. But there's progress. And, but nobody wants that in their backyard. Every morning, I don't hear it every morning, but I know they do it every morning, they let the dogs out of the cage at the dog pound, which is right up in my backyard. And they sit out there, they go crazy because they're dog pound dogs, and they bark their head off for about an hour or two, till they put them back inside. I just, I don't even hear it anymore. I know they're doing it, I occasionally, but it's, it's not something that, you know, it's like living near the train tracks. Eventually, you just don't hear it. Sometimes it's just unfortunate, and we never know what that's going to do to us. There are, bear with me here as I get my note, and then when I'm done, I'll be done. The city of Peru, my latest count shows that there's 11,073 residents. And what you're asking for us to do is make a decision that affects the entire city based on point 0023% of this city's population, because nobody wants to see a gravel pit. I think that's asking a lot. I believe everybody has a right, and I understand that you have a right to, to, to voice that. Mr. Boyer's either going to get an approval on this request for zoning setbacks, or he is stuck in a, what I would call a land monopoly by the adjacent owner to him. Because if he can't do it there, where's he going to be able to go? It also, well, I've already stated that. If he is denied his request, we've stunted his ability to expand his operation. He's got millions of dollars invested already down at the end of the road, and we've just basically said, hey, thanks for what you've done, but we're not here to help you anymore. You want to expand? I don't know, find a place, but not here. And I don't think that is the spirit of growth that we want the city of Peru to be known for. You know? I get it, man. You don't want that in your backyard, I get it. You don't want to go out there and look at it. It's not the end of the world. They're tearing houses down on US 31 because people don't want to take as long to get from South Bend to Indianapolis, taking family homes away from people. They have no choice. So I have, although I understand, I'm compassionate, and I, and I feel for you, I, I, I think the growth will be good for Peru. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Huber. Any other comments from the council?
I just want to make a clarification. We're just voting on the rezone from R1 to A3. We're not voting on variance of setbacks. You know, that's up to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So, you know, I don't really want that to be part of, of this discussion, that it's not our, in our purview, so.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the council? If not, we would allow some folks from the audience to come up and give us your opinions. Please, come forward and state your name.
My name's Chad Sutton, 1642 East Pawpaw Pike. Before I begin respectfully, I'm speaking for my elderly neighbor that can't be here, I'm speaking for myself, I'm speaking for my neighbor with five kids that can't be here. They got longer than five minutes. I don't want to be up here, I don't want to waste your time and, and go into too many things, but I'd appreciate not being cut off at five minutes. Can I get that respect? I promise you, not everyone up here, back here wants to talk.
Yeah. And please understand that in a meeting like this, this actually is a public hearing.
Sure.
A public meeting.
Sure.
But it's not a meeting for the public. Speaking is a privilege. We allow you to come up and speak. So I'm trying to at least put some constraints and regulations on our meetings so they just don't ramble on. So I'll allow you to go ahead and speak. And I'm not going to cut you off at five minutes exactly, but we have to have some comments involved.
Oh, absolutely. I'll keep it concise.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Chad Sutton, 1642 East Paw Pike. I also own Wabash Valley Abstract in Peru, title company, real estate, deal with planning and zoning a lot. Deal with it with the city, the county, Cass County, Wabash County, Miami County, Peru City. I am certainly not anti-business, okay? I've helped many businesses. I've helped, recently helped the new gymnastics place find a location. I've done a lot of things for businesses, recommended them, financing, et cetera, et cetera. There's approximately 34 houses on our road. How strongly we feel about this, you'll know because you drive by, you see all the signs that we spent the money to get, we've maintained them out there. Right now, within the current Kokomo gravel location, there's one house within 1,300 feet. There will be 23 houses within 1,300 feet here. I want to say, I counted, and so I may be off, I thought we had 27 petitions, but originally I said 25. I do realize one withdrew. But it's a very large percentage of who owns out there against this. 12 wells ran dry. I will kind of gloss over that because others can speak of that more. We got five widows out there, several on fixed incomes. I've got some info here. I, I just want to know, did you guys see our petitions that laid out a lot of the points? Did that get to you guys? Thank you. So first thing, if Lynn capacities out, this is the auction info. It's with Haldeman, this sold, there's two tracks, so I want to point out, track one, and it starred, this sold for over 13,000 an acre. This is very quality farm ground. Advertised as tillable land, he outbid several farmers. So you had farmers bidding on this, other people looking to invest in this land as well. It was not contingent. I do a lot of deals where the seller has to get the zoning in place ahead of time. It was not contingent. I'm, I'm going through this quick, so I'm going to go to the next part, which is the assessor records. So, if you want to hand that out, please. I don't have it all right in front of me, because she's handing them out, but the, you'll see, at the bottom portion there, it shows what is tillable land. The bulk of this is tillable land. You can see that just from driving by. In addition, there's only .74 acres of woods. The assessor has this as quality farm ground. There is not diminishing factors on there, very few diminishing factors. Remember, we're hearing zoning today. We're not hearing special exception. People want to talk about that so much. So let's, let's keep it basic here. So we've got the auction info, that shows it's quality ground. We've got the assessor info and the visible eye test, okay? Then you have to look at the definition of A3. Does it fall in that? Are there wetlands, overgrown vegetation? It does not. Zoning code is in place to protect us. That's the whole point of this. I would like to call Haley up here, if I may. I found out the county, they, their zoning administrator does a recommendation. Haley cannot do that, I understand that, but I have a simple question for her. Based on the auction info, the assessment info, the visible eye test, does this fall under the definition of A3 in your zoning code?
No, it doesn't.
It does not. That's the most powerful thing you should take home today. There, I'm, I'm going to gloss over because I, I want to respect the time and the noise and all that, the pollutants, others can talk about that that go in the air, that come up here. He's saying a developmental plan. Understand, once these things pass, he could blast if he, if he so chooses. There's not covenants and restrictions that are going to hold him to the plan. One thing he brought out was the Miami County Economic Development letter, slipped that in late at the Plan Commission meeting. We have no idea what he presented. We have no idea if his attorney presented it, who is also Miami County Economic Development's attorney, by the way, which is a potential conflict of interest. And if Dustin, if anyone wants to ask him, he could give his opinion on that. I have all the faith in people from Miami County Economic Development, I don't think anything was going on there, but we never got, we don't know what he said. So we need to be able to give our argument. So I went to Jim Tid, and I have that in writing, which Lynn will pass around. We want to give our side, so he feels the board should be able to hear our side on that. Because we want development there. There's shortage of housing, commercial development. We want things, we just do not want a hole in the ground out there. When we talk about values and you're looking at Rock Hollow and, and all these places, this is after they're done with the land, okay? What happens during this with home values, that's a different story, what you're dealing with there. I'm going to reiterate again, the zoning board is an advisory board, the, the Plan Commission is an advisory board. I know Mike said they were worried about variance and, and going over property lines. Strike that. They were voting on zoning. They were not voting on variance issues. They were voting on zoning, just like you guys are. Does this land fit the qualification to go from R1 to A3? Your advisory board is supposed to advise you. You have an unfavorable recommendation, you have your zoning administrator, you guys just conceded, we're not, we're not experts on this. I would say I've got decent amount of knowledge. I'd say I'd hope your zoning administrator would, and I would hope your advisory board would be someone you'd listen to, because that's the purpose of the board. Unfavorable recommendation, and you have your zoning administrator just said, this is not A3 ground. Okay? So there were other things I wanted to say, I'll let others go into it. I will say this, and I'm not saying this, other people are saying there's a lot of politics going on. I don't believe that. I've worked with the city on many projects. We, we all invest in Peru, we love Peru, we want to stay here. I own a business in Peru. I would relocate my business to here if a building site came up for it. We, we want the best for Peru, but the point here is this is a zoning hearing. So we're talking about all these things. We don't know if the special exception will pass. So why are we talking about this economic impact it may have? Because we don't know. That, that's a whole nother hearing. So the story tonight ends one of two ways. The Peru council can deny the zoning petition based on an unfavorable recommendation by their advisory board from the Plan Commission, and it doesn't fit the classification per their zoning administrator. Or it can end with Peru City Council approves despite unfavorable recommendation, despite not fitting the A3 definition, and despite most owners being here petitioning against it. Two very, very different headlines, and the spotlight is on you for that. So I ask you really think about what you're voting on today. I know other factors came into play, and, and you're bringing that up, so I feel it's fair for me to bring it up, where Mike Sabliss, he's got a business relationship with Boyer. Mike's Sablisk, he's got a business relationship with Boyer. Mike Sablisk argued in the BZA meeting with Catton about not buying that house. Let's focus here on what this is. We are voting on zoning. Unfavorable, it does not fit the definition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Do you have any questions for Mr. Sutton?
You want to pass out Jim Tid's email?
I can.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, Chad.
Yes, absolutely.
And it's not really a question. It's just, it's kind of a statement. So, you know, the A3, yeah, I agree. It doesn't fit what it currently.
Sure.
I mean, he's only asking for A3 because that's what would be the correct zoning for him to put a mining operation there.
Absolutely.
I mean, but I drove out there. It's not R1 either. There's corn growing there.
Sure. I would think if it was agriculture, it would be A1.
Yeah, it should be, well, it should be A1 right now.
Yeah. I could see, I would, I would assume, and I didn't mean to cut you off there. I would assume it was R1 due to the large concentration of houses may be one of the reasons. Haley could probably speak to that better than me. I don't know. I will say, I don't know where you're going with this, but zoning is in place and these restrictions of why you can't have special exception on A1, which you just conceded it, but it should be A1 if rezoned ag.
Currently, yeah.
It is, is because it's supposed to protect the land and the surrounding owners. We are supposed to be able to look at the zoning code and say, yeah, gravel pit should never go here because this would never qualify for A3.
Yeah.
That, that's the purpose of zoning. And I, we do zoning endorsements on title policies. This is a big part of our industry because you want to get the zoning in place before you buy. That's what a zoning endorsement is for. And he did not do that because he thought this could get pushed through. And again, I just don't see how it can be rezoned to that based on the definition and off of the unfavorable recommendation. I, I just, I have a hard time with that. That's the whole purpose of this. You're, you're looking at zoning.
Yeah. And, and I'm not going anywhere with it. I was just trying to make what was the obvious.
Sure.
You know, that he want, he's asking for A3 for what, the future use of it. But yeah, right now, yeah, it's not even, it's not even accurately zoned when you've got a full crop of corn.
And I would say, we're all about development. We're fine with the subdivision going there, which Peru is in dire need of building lots. You ask any realtor. So he's not, it's not that he's just handcuffed that. There's a lot of things. He could, he could sell it to another farmer. There's development that could happen that would benefit Peru. That's our point here. We are not, not in, not in our backyard. We, it's not zoned for that. I, I just can't, and there's a reason for that.
I have a question. So, the zoning, is this a zoning appraisal? Is that an appraisal like someone would appraise a home, or a diamond, or a classic car? Is it up to interpretation, depending who looks at the property and how they want?
Oh, I mean, you can look at the definition. It is, it's clear as day.
No, I mean, I read the definition, but the person that looks at the property and says, okay, I see this, I measure the slopes, I measure the.
Yeah, but you'd be hard pressed that it's something that's sold at that price. Oh, by the way, with Larry Jordan's, he did a market analysis. You'll see on there, I think it was 47 sales, 10,000 an acre was the median there. And then he specifically said 13,000 to 15,000 is the very good prime farmland, which would be A1. And I don't think you could find anyone with any knowledge of zoning that could go out there and classify that as A3. And that's evidenced by assessment records. That's, so Haley's spot on.
I got a couple of things. You were talking about, you said that it was after the fact for Rock Hollow. They're still currently mining and they're still currently building. So that was like, that statement's not true, when you said that's.
Well, they, they had mined, mined on actual where rock is, correct?
Right. And I'm stopping, I just right across the board.
Sure.
It's still currently happening and they're still currently developing, and it's one of the most sought after properties.
Sure. And I, and I also want to make clear, because, and again, I don't want to go too deep in the well thing, but please let it be known that City of Peru did run water out there, because someone wouldn't build without water out of concern for the wells. So when they said local business, local realtor, well, who I think they may be talking about, did hook up the water out there.
Right. But if they developed on this land.
Sure, sure.
And we put, like, say, Section 8 housing out there, is that what you want in your backyard? And the water usage for that, they're going to be pulling out of your well directly because they have to have the water.
What I would say with that, I don't think that would happen without the infrastructure in place. I mean, you, City of Peru would probably run utilities out there if you're going to get that much of a development for it. Would you agree with that?
What if it's.
That's my experience.
You're still pulling water out of, no matter what you put out there?
If you.
Any type of housing development.
If, if they hooked up the city utilities, they're pulling water from us?
No, they would be pulling out of the current wells if they didn't run it out there.
They, what, I mean, I don't know how familiar you are with developments like that. The infrastructure would probably need to be in place for that. Let's be clear.
Once again, so it's not usable for that until that infrastructure's out there?
It, it depends on what you're putting out there. I would put my business out there with just septic and well. I'm, my business I would. It just depends what would go. A subdivision, you could do well in septic. And I want to be clear with one thing. When you look at the development plan, what makes you think he would not be using the entire land that creates it unusable? Are you saying that his land would be developed after he's done using it, or the surrounding land?
No, I'm saying that if this doesn't get passed and he sells it off to somebody, everybody's going to want to use all their property. So that variance is going to have to come into play, no matter if it was a UPS hub, they're going to want all that land utilized as well. So those variances would still come in. You're saying that you have to have the variances to do it.
Variant, when you're saying variances.
The offsets, all of the offsets of the property.
So you're talking about setbacks?
Special exceptions, special exceptions for the property.
Or are you talking about zoning? So let's be clear what we're, we're talking about. There's two different things.
Correct. I understand that. But the zoning of it, if it doesn't get passed this time, somebody else who said, well, other develop.
Yeah.
Do you not think they're going to want to come in and have to do something else?
And I don't think they should do it zone A3, but we're, we're okay with commercial. We have no problem with that. We have no problem with residential development, which to me, I feel that's the best use. We've got a shortage. I mean, talk to realtors. They'll tell you, there is a shortage. We need building lots. I, I, I don't, I hope you know I'm not anti-development.
Right.
I, I mean, you know that, correct?
For sure.
So, no, we, we just, it's not, that is not the place for gravel pit. And by, by the way, I did title work on something that was for sold, or for sale and sold at auction over near rock that probably could have been used for this purpose, right by, right off Logan Sport Road there. So this idea of shortage of land to find, I, I, I don't know, where's the proof in that? So I don't.
You mean for the gravel?
There was gravel there?
I would assume, and I don't know, just because in that area, there, there certainly was. So I don't know for a fact, but I would assume very, very possible. There's, it's not like this is the only place where there's rock, okay?
Right.
So, weed, it's not the area for it. If you look at other gravel pits, it, it, it just, it's the thing you'll see when you come in off of Wabash. You're going to see over that berm, off that road, Wabash Road. But would you agree with that?
That is a totally different process. So yes, you're right. If you were to do that and you were mining limestone, you would absolutely be different.
They're going to have a berm. There was a claim that we wouldn't see it. But when you're, Wabash Road is very elevated. So you would.
Right.
And.
You see a body of water?
Body of water, stacks of rock, machinery, you see quite a bit. And there's, there's also an argument for safety issues. I mean, kids drown in these, and it's right there, visible. Should we go in there, go jump it in? There's, there's arguments to be made. And that's what we're here for. We, I'm not, I'm not here to attack anyone. I have nothing against Kokomo gravel. I hope they find a location. I hope Mike does well. I'm sure he will, no matter what. It simply does not fit the zoning. I'm going to go back to that again. You heard what Haley said. That's the point of zoning. So, I'm most likely, if they lose, they have appeal. Maybe we'll appeal if we lose, but it's pretty simple. It's not zoned for that. It should not be zoned for that because it doesn't fit the zoning code. The zoning code is in place for A3.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Any further comments? Does anybody from the audience have anything substantially different than what we heard from Mr. Sutton?
Yes.
If so, please come forward. Yes. Pardon me?
I would like to speak after Mr. Constable.
And I would like to keep the comments to anything that adds to substantially different than what we've heard from Mr. Sutton, please.
The first thing I'd like to say is that farm ground, once you make it into a gravel pit, is non-renewal. Second thing I'd like to say is gravel is not renewable. So once they remove all that gravel, it's nothing going, it's not going to be anything but a hole filled with water. If it's left to be farmland ground, it can produce a crop from now to eternity. It will never, if you take that away, it'll never produce a crop again. So that's one thing I'd like to say. Forget the other one. But there's a white elephant here that everybody's avoiding. I've heard that this is Peru that we're talking about. This is in Miami County, not Peru. Now, I know that there's some kind of two-mile something or other that reaches, but does that give Peru that two-mile reach? And if it does, I'm not allowed to vote in Peru because I live in the county and I live in that two-mile district. I haven't been able to vote for any of you to make this decision. I have no voter representation. I feel like my constitutional rights have been violated severely, because I don't have a chance to vote for the mayor or any of you to make this decision that's going to go on in my part of the county where I live. I pay taxes to the county, and my county taxes are going to go for making, helping the roads along this parcel that you call Peru. I'm paying taxes to Peru and I'm not getting a benefit from it. I, 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 I am pretty upset.
I don't understand that either.
It, everybody that lives in this two-mile section, voter rights have been violated by the City of Peru. And I don't know how that came about. I don't know where the City of Peru got the okay to get that kind of zoning, but we basically have been annexed without the annex.
I'll be glad to. So, the extra two-mile territorial jurisdictions prescribed by Indiana statute is provided by the state legislative bodies. I know, I would say 90% of all municipalities, like cities, use and exercise their jurisdiction in the two-mile jurisdiction. So it's not just the City of Peru.
There's a very huge part of the state that their vote doesn't count for anything.
I mean, it's prescribed by statute.
Oh, yeah, I see that. But I've got to call in to Ethan Manning. I got to call in to Stacy Donato. I got to call in to the governor and to find out how this could be possible, that all of us with rights to vote have been violated. And believe you me, I am pursuing it. I don't care if they get the gravel permit or not. I am not done with the City of Peru and what they've done to me.
Got a question?
That's all I got to say.
Dustin, if.
Thank you, Mr. Constable.
If this was.
Thank you.
Not considered in the City of Peru, would Mr. Boyer then have been able to do it like he did his other pit without any discussion?
No, because at the end of the day, the county, I mean, it's zoned what it is. At the end of the day, he'd have to seek to rezone from the county.
Okay.
I mean, but just because it's within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city, the two-mile jurisdiction, it's duly acted and passed, the city exercises its zoning authority in that two-mile.
Okay. If I may, if it were, if it were county, the county would have so much of a designation on it, or had it on the exact designation it was, or county's own.
And I wonder what, what was the zoning when you bought Kokomo gravel? Was it a field just like the one to the west of it?
Yes.
So if it, if it, this other had been county, they may very well have, one hadn't approved that as well. I mean, it may be to your benefit that it is in the city, or under the city, because someone else is looking at it and they're being questioned on it.
Can I say something?
Sure.
So I did talk to the county zoning administrator, and if it was in the county, he would not zone it A3. It's clear cut. I'm just telling you.
No, I'm not saying that you're wrong. I'm saying that the other one, at one, at a point in time was rezoned for.
Or what was it zoned when you bought it?
It's, what was that zoned when you bought it, the other Kokomo gravel? Was it A2? Was it A?
I honestly can't remember that.
Okay.
It was 2001.
So assuming he got it rezoned.
It was very farmland.
Did you have to get it rezoned? Do you remember that?
Yeah, we had to go through, we had to go through zoning to get it.
I know you had to go through zoning to get what you wanted done. To have to get rezoned is my. So assuming that he went through a rezoning process could be incorrect.
Okay.
And that's what I want to make clear on. There's just a lot of terms being thrown around that are just incorrect.
No, that's.
And, and I know you don't have to deal with it every day, but I, that's where.
No, no problem. It was just a question. I didn't know.
Sure.
Thank you. Do we have somebody else from the audience would like to speak for a few minutes? Please come forward. Could you give us your name, please?
My name is Sharon Catton. My husband is Larry Catton, and we've lived at 2043 East Wabash Road for 33 years. And our house was built in 1951. But first, I want to speak on the reasonable offer that Mr. Boyer made us.
Sure.
Yes, he did offer to buy our. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. He did offer, make an offer for us for his house at a reasonable, a fair market value. But then with the next breath, he says, you do realize you live on a two-lane road and there's a railroad track there. So right there, that tells me he's not going to give me a fair value. On, and besides that, if he said we did not like that bid, then we could get an appraiser to come out and give us another estimate, okay? And if he didn't like our bid, then we would get another appraisal. So this could go on and on and on till we got something reasonable. But we don't want to sell our home. And I just, I don't want it saying that, you know, he gave us a fair offer. He did not give us a reasonable offer.
Okay. Well, I just, I, like I said, we had all heard rumors.
I know.
And, and that's just what they are. But you clarified that, and I would say, if I was looking at a home and somebody said, let's get four appraisals, we'll average it out and see which, what they come to, and that's what we'll do, I would think that would be a reasonable way to assess a property. However, I just wanted to say that there had been some efforts made to try to.
Yes.
Work something out.
Yeah, yeah. Okay?
Okay, yes.
Okay. Our home sits in the northeast section of Mr. Boyer's field, and our home faces to the north, which is Wabash Road. And our property to the east, west, and south all sit at the edge of Mr. Boyer's field. This is fine when the farmers plant corn and beans, but this is a gravel pit that he wants to put in this field. How can you say this is acceptable? I doubt that any of you would want a gravel pit on three sides of your home. I'm sure that you would also be trying to get the board to deny this zoning change if you, if it was your property. We are opposed to your changing the district zone to A3 to allow Mr. Boyer to have a gravel pit on this land, which is currently zoned R1. I hope all of you have been, all of you board members have been out to see the field and have actually stopped and looked at it. If you have, you will see that it does not meet the zoning for A3. A3 is classified as rough brown, rough farmland with overgrown vegetation, wood area, and a wetland. If the land is so bad, why were farmers bidding on it on the online auction? If you have not been out to look at the field, how can you honestly vote on it? So I hope all of you have been out there and looked at it. And then my second question, how can you have or even want a gravel pit within the two-mile radius of the City of Peru? Is this something that you want people to see when they drive into Peru on Wabash Road and Pawpaw Pike? We already have Boyer's Kokomo gravel a mile east on Pawpaw Pike, and east side aggregates just. just past that on Wabash Road. We sure do not need another gravel pit. If you allow the field to be rezoned to A3 and the gravel pit is approved, how will this benefit the city of Peru? It's, it's my understanding the two-mile radius was established to protect and regulate what is allowed to be put on that land so that in the future, the city, if they wanted to extend or annex it into the city, they could. This land could be used for single-family housing, which is already allowed in zone R1. As you can see, we already have quite a few very nice homes on Paw Paw Pike. One of the things I hear when I talk to people on Paw Paw Pike and Wabash Road is, "We can't vote for the city council, but they can tell us what they think is good for us." If you have a two-mile radius there, there should be people elected to represent us and speak for us. If you allow the gravel pit, the houses around it will all be devaluated and no one will be willing to buy or build a home in this area. And can you blame them? Mr. Wyman, the realtor from Kokomo that Mr. Boyer brought to the plan commission meeting last Tuesday, May the 28th, 2024, told the group that the gravel pit would not devaluate our homes. How can it not devaluate our homes being that close to the gravel pit? This is Peru, Indiana, not Noblesville, Carmel, or Indy. Our home values are not high to begin with and with a gravel pit, they will decrease I'm trying to pick through so I don't have This gravel pit will cause hardships for all of us living close to the gravel pit. When you drive past his other gravel pit a mile east of us on Paw Paw Pike, just look at it and say that would be something that you think would enhance the field around all of us where he wants to put this gravel pit. I would think if Mr. Boyer wants to be a good neighbor, as his lawyer said he wanted to be, he would find land at another location where there are a lot of, where there are not a lot of homes close to it. Putting a gravel pit this close to so many homes is not being a good neighbor. I'm sure he can find a farmer willing to buy this 48 acres and continue farming it. We do not need to lose any more farmland. We ask you to please deny Mr. Boyer's petition to rezone this parcel from R1 to A3 and to follow the vote of the plan commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Catton. We have one, another? Please come, come up.
My name is Judy Kiefer and I live at 2189 East Wabash Road. Bobby says our eight acres of farmland abuts to Mike's new property. That's mine. My concern is where the entrance and the exit is going to be for this gravel pit more than anything else because when you are on that curve, it goes 55 miles per hour. There are people going lickety-split down that road and you're going to have trucks pulling out on the Wabash Road going very slowly and there's going to be accidents. There are going to be accidents. There's no doubt in my mind, there will be accidents because people hit, see that 55 mile per hour and they go, "Go." Lot of people. I don't want to see anybody get hurt. I don't want to see anybody killed and I don't want to see any of his trucks messed up. That is my only concern right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please come forward.
I'm sorry, I need to introduce myself. My name is Elaine Anderson. Can you hear me? My address is 701 North Country Club Road. I want to ask first of all, how many people have visited, looked at the field that we're talking about? You all have been there. Okay, great. Well, my different perspective is that for those of you who don't know, there is a soil survey of Miami County, Indiana. This survey was created starting in 1970 to 1978. All of the soil was sampled in Miami County and this booklet was published in July of In it is details, details, details. This is a general map of Miami County, but within that is the broken-down maps. In this book, there are mini-maps of all of the county. I just picked out the part that has the field in it that we're talking about tonight, okay? If you will look at this map and at the top, about in the middle, you see JB Richards Reserve Number 13. Below that, the curvy dark line is the Wabash River and to the left of that is the field that we're talking about. And you can see where the number 26 is. I don't think that's exactly where the field is, but it doesn't matter for the point that I'm going to make with you. If you will look at the next piece of paper I gave you, it does have the soil definition. No one's talked about soil tonight, so this is new. Listen up. The farm field has Jesse Silkloom for one soil type. That was 34.67 acres advertised by Holderman and Fox Silkloom with a 2% to 6% slope, 7.75. Now, obviously, that does not add up to 48 acres, but if you will go to the next sheet of paper that I passed out for you, you will see an overlay of the entire field. You will note the first two items on there show the Fox Silkloom as tillable land and Jesse Silkloom as tillable land, 7.1 acres and 34.705. That's close, not just exactly the amount of acres that Holderman advertised, but this is from the assessor's office, okay? Below that, it has the land use. So, you'll see at the top half of your paper, the land use is number four, which is tillable land. Of that 48 plus acres, 41.8 acres is tillable. And you can look down and see the non-tillable, the woodland. The woodland, we're talking about three-quarters of an acre, okay? And the public road, a person owns out to the middle of the road, that's 2.712. That's what we pay our taxes on. The next piece of paper I gave you is farmland classification. This is from the USPA, Natural Resources Conservation Office on West Logan Sport Road, but it's also on the website. It's nothing private information. Everybody can assess it. And you can see that Fox Silkloom and Jesse, which I've circled, are identified as rated all areas are prime farmland, okay? And then the next column indicates the number of acres in Miami County that fall into that category. At the bottom there, you see there's 241,000 acres of farmland, or land, I should say, I'm sorry, in Miami County. The last page I gave you is a summary, and I'm sure you've read it or I hope you've read it, of the definition of A1, A2, A3. It is very clear from the information I've given you on soil types. It's very clear that this field is A1. Now, I own farmland that has the same sort of soil in it, the same type of soil. I know my yields. I get my yields every year from my farmers. My farmers also farmed this field for some years before Mike Boyer bought it. My cousins who live in California owned it. I know what that farm field produced because when my farmers were there harvesting, they came right next to my field or vice versa. And so, we always compared how that field did to my field. Well, they're straight in line with each other. Sometimes, though, that field did get rain when mine didn't and vice versa. But in 2020, my field produced 237 bushels of corn. Now, for those of you who aren't farmers, that's a pretty darn good yield. And if it was A3 by definition, rough farmland, it certainly would never, ever, ever produce that. My farmers always rotate crops, corn one year, beans the next. For 22 years, that field was farmed by Bob Cady and he grew corn in it, 22 years in a row. That was not a good farming practice. So, when my farmers picked it up, they started farming it, they rotated the crops. They had very good yields. I talked to AJ Jordan. He's an agent for Holderman Farm Services and he indicated that that is river bottom. Yes, that is prime farmland. Don't let anybody tell you that it's not. So, that is part of the discussion that I wanted to talk about soil, soil types. Probably nobody has heard that before and I hope that I've given you some insight onto why that is not and should never be zoned A3. I also wanted to, I just took a couple notes from the conversations tonight. Mike, the field's been zoned A2 forever and ever, the gravel pit. The gravel pit's A2. You didn't change the zoning.
That's the current location.
Pardon?
That's the current location.
Yes. The current location's A2. The field is zoned, the proposed gravel pit area is zoned R1 primarily because my cousin built a house that the Cattons now own in, in 1951. At that time, you had to be zoned R1. You still do to build a house. Now, it's a little different. In Miami County, you have to have 10 acres to build a house. If you don't, you have to get a variance, okay? So, that should clear up what was the zoning before. It is still R1 and that is the reason why. I wanted to make a comment about your saying that, oh, you could have fancy houses built with. There is no area around that field where you could even build a house. Everybody owns the properties. There's, when the gravel pit is done, there's water there, there's still no place to build a house. I don't know, the row is on one side, property's owned by other people. It's just not fit for a development anyplace around there. So, I, I'm not impressed hearing about homes around gravel pits, okay? It's not pertinent. We're never going to have million-dollar homes in that area of Peru. For those who don't know about dredging, I know a lot about dredging because the field I own is next door to the present gravel pit. I watch the dredging. I've watched it for years and what's not been mentioned is that, yes, there's an eight-foot berm, but those excavators, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, those excavators that hold the dredge line sit on top of the berms at both the south end by the Wabash River and the north end out by Paw Paw Pike. So, if you talk about, you won't see anything going on, that is absolutely not true. I paid many visits down to watch that whole process going on. Would you argue that point, Mike?
Yeah. Because this new location is going to have an eight-foot berm, an access road inside. And when I was talking to my dredgers about doing it, I told them simply, "You're not going to put the equipment on top of the berm."
Well, where are you going to put it to hold the dredge line?
The 60-foot access road inside the berm. There's an eight-foot berm, it's going to be 53 feet wide at the bottom, but the 60-foot access road, your dead man's going to set on, so we keep it off the berm.
We've had an access road where you are now, but you didn't put it there. It's easier on the berm.
No.
Okay, that's my point. Can believe what you're told, but I've seen what's, what's going on, okay? Also, this has not been brought up by anybody, all gravel pits are supposed to have a six-foot wire-woven fence. And mine, my property next to the present gravel pit doesn't even have a berm all the way. There's some dirt piled up, maybe, what is that? Less than three feet. In some spots, that whole area has been eliminated recently, not too long ago, and I have geese, goslings coming up from the water, coming over to my field. They have no barrier at all. And last year, they damaged about four acres of my crops, okay? Yes, I get a goose permit every single year. It's very difficult to shoot geese because the second you arrive at the field, the geese fly away. Now, if they've got goslings, they don't fly, okay? But all of those goslings add up, so eventually I have a goose, a goose problem. The people around there will also have a goose problem. No one's mentioned that. You talk about saving $73,000 a year if you use that gravel pit as opposed to Logan Sport. Well, $73,000, that's not very much money to save when you're spending millions of dollars for other things. I questioned the hours of working in the winter time, six to six. Oh, my heavens, do you hear the equipment backing up with all the beep, 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 beeps at 6:00 in the morning till 6:00 at night? That's a long time. Setbacks, we, we're not concerned about setbacks. You all are not concerned about setbacks. We are because he wants to decrease the setback from a resident from 1,000 feet? That's from a house, a dwelling, okay, by definition, to 100 feet? Are you serious? That's pretty significant. It shouldn't be anything less than 500 or 750.
Mrs. Catton, they're not here tonight to debate setbacks.
No, I mentioned
And I know, I know you are. And it's, you've been 12 minutes and I've asked everybody to keep it to five, so can you please try to finish your statements?
Yes, I'm done speaking.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Does the council need any more information to make a decision? Sure.
My name is Joy Hunt. I live at 1682 East Paw Paw Pike and I'd like to just kind of sum some stuff up to finish this meeting. Two people were going to build houses out there. Kiefer's daughter was going to build on that land, will not build now. I'm sorry, your last name? Jake Williams was going to build on that land. This is all came about, will not build now. That's my first point. My second point is, Mr. Boyer throughout all this has said, and I know that I'm kind of steering away from the zoning, he'll be a good neighbor. We've heard this, we heard this at the plan commission. Oh, I'm going to be a good neighbor. I'm going to be a good neighbor. I'm going to be a good neighbor. We hope he's going to be a good neighbor. But was he a good neighbor when 12 people lost their wells? Did he come to any of those people and say, "Hey, let me kind of help you out a little bit? Let's get to the bottom of this. Is this my fault? Is there something I can do for you?" I don't know about that either. That's something that needs to be brought up. My next one is, Mr. Huber, you said when the plan commission voted in favor of us and that, you know, we're all human and we, we're all in this together. That's fine, but Mr. Stevenson was on that board also and he voted in favor of Mr. Boyer. When he was questioned about that, he said, "Well, Drew mentioned that Kokomo gravel was doing work with the city and that factored into his decision." I, I don't understand that. I, I don't get why he would have said that. I don't understand Mr. Sablisk arguing with Mrs. Catton when we're here to get this rezoned and he was arguing with Mrs. and he was arguing with Mrs. Catton because she wouldn't sell his house. So, if we're here tonight to vote on rezoning, let's all stick together and vote on rezoning of what this property is, not what she said, what she, he said, what Mr. Boyer's going to do, what the mayor wants. Let's vote on zoning. Thank you.
Anything further from the council? Do you need any?
I'd like to make another comment.
Mr. Huber?
We've been here for quite a while. No one has thanked the Peru Planning Commission for the work that they did prior to coming here, and I want to thank them for doing it, because they're, they're in there for a reason, okay? They're there for a reason, to help us, to protect us, so I want to, I want to thank the Peru Planning Commission for doing their work.
Thank you.
And then, I guess, the last thing I had, kind of what got me started was, and as I was struggling through this whole situation and trying to figure something out that would be a compromise, I did reach out to Mr. Boyer, and I did reach out to Ms. Anderson, and I just said, hey, you know, I believe there's a solution to this that could make everyone happy, and is there any possible way that the parties involved could get together and reconsider a purchase on her property? And I think there's a path there that could be opened and considered, and that was my whole objective, and that's what kind of got me, gets fired up, because I think the solution's right next door to where he is, but it's Ms. Anderson's property. She doesn't have to sell it, and he doesn't have to buy it, but it'd sure make it a lot better for everybody involved if they could work it out. But if they can't work it out, then that does tie his hands. Doesn't mean he can't go to 10 miles north and buy a gravel pit, but to be able, or build a gravel pit, but to be able to do what he wants to do and expand his operation, it sure would make sense to be able to go into that property, again, if they could work it out. That's all I was trying to make happen, and that would be down the road, connected to where the other one is. Nobody's going to see it. It's going to be there, but it would help him expand, it would help the community. I think that we do have a huge sewer project coming up. It's a 121 million dollar project. It's going to take a lot of aggregate. It'd be a lot easier to get it from home than to have to get it from, whether it be Logan Sport or Wabash or wherever all the pits are. So, that was what was motivating me, and I was not trying to put anybody, and I apologize, Elaine, anybody up against the wall. I just wish a spirit of cooperation would put something together that would benefit everyone involved, and if it's not good for everybody, it's not a good deal. So, I just wanted to clarify and let you know, that was my motivation. Yes?
Thank you.
May I, and this is to clarify something with Drew, because I talked with Drew. I got kind of rushed up here, so I didn't get to say it. I think Drew, after talking with him, great guy, I was trying to find out why he voted the way he voted. I think he has the best intentions. That is something that you did mention to me, and it sounded like it factored into a decision. And the main thing we're trying to drive home here is, that shouldn't, that should never influence ethically, that should not influence your decision, that you don't want to tarnish a relationship. That's not fair to us, okay? And so, we're voting on a simple issue here, simple issue. Does it fit the zone, okay? And so, I just didn't want Drew sitting up there looking like a villain, because our conversation was a very good conversation. I think he had the best intentions. I think he did what he thought was right at the time, and again, that was something I wanted to bring up. I got kind of rushed, so I leaned to it, so I didn't want it to, I needed that expanded on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more comment to make on Mr. Huber's thing there. You talked about how beneficial that deck gravel pit, the aggregate, will be for Peru, but the reason I live in the county is because I don't want to be under the Peru agenda. You have taken that right away from me.
Well, I didn't.
Well, you didn't.
Somewhere, someday.
You didn't.
Somebody did.
It happened back during the Walker administration, I believe, when it first came, but it's been a while.
Been a while.
Been a minute.
I deal with it a lot.
Yeah, anyway, the city has a different agenda than the county. The reason I live in the county is I don't want to operate underneath the city agenda. I am being forced to operate under the city agenda by that.
I understand.
And I have no say, because I have no elected representation.
I'd like to clarify that statement about when the city took into my jurisdiction. Yes, they did initially. Then it was given to the county. I go to all the county commissioners' meetings. At one point in time, when Josh Francis and Larry West and Alan Hunt were on the board of the commissioners, the city requested to take back the jurisdiction. I was at the vote. I told them at the time, it's a mistake you're making, okay? But I was there, and it has not been that many years ago. Clarification, point made.
Thank you.
Just real quick, a clarification on that is whether or not the city was going to enforce building code and what not in the two-mile jurisdiction? And that happened in, I think, 16 or 17?
I would like to speak, have a chance to speak here, very briefly.
Sure.
Oh, thank you, okay. Mr. Huber, I appreciate your apology. I think it was appropriate. I do think that when a sitting councilman brings a list of all the reasons he's already going to vote no, that he's written before the meeting, that that might inspire some of the passion that you hear in the voices of the people who are against this particular project. And to Pete's point, I do think that this was a really difficult moment for the planning commission. I go to a lot of planning commission meetings, and I think they're really good at their job. They're very pro-business, and they talk about what businesses are good for the city. We had long discussions last year about where we put people's containers, where they store their things, and where do we want to have those buildings, and how many of those storage facilities do we want in the city? All of those are parts of how we plan the city, and I think it's a fair discussion to decide whether or not we need a gravel pit within the two-mile radius. And so, it's not just the rezoning, it's also what kind of businesses, not just whether we're being pro-business or anti-business. You can be pro-business and prefer a type of business over another. And then, just one last thing, Mr. Huber was talking about the tree line and that no one's even going to see this, but I, as I sat through the meeting last week, I did see the paperwork and the slide presentation. They said they were taking those trees down.
Oh, okay.
So, I saw you at the meeting, I know you were there.
Well, I must not caught that part.
It was a very long meeting, and a lot of things were said, so it's all good. So, that's what I wanted to add. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr.?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, everybody, for, you know, bringing your comments, and I, and I can't speak for everybody here, but I know that it's been weighing on us, this matter, because, and we tried to do our due diligence research, been out there, viewed the existing operation, the fields, you know, I have friends that live out in that general area and beyond, because, you know, they get some of the collateral from having trucks and so on on the road. So, I do appreciate everybody coming here and presenting, you know, your opinions and facts, so I want to say thank you.
Thank you. So, before you, tonight, you have ordinance 10-2024, an ordinance to rezone in the city of Peru. We've been asked to approve the rezoning from, or you have been asked to approve the rezoning from R1 to A3 on this particular parcel that we've been speaking about all night. We do need a motion to move forward with vote?
Dustin, we were also asking to spin out of all of the...
Pardon me?
We were also moving to have...
They considered it already.
Okay.
So, yes, they'd be voting to approve. So, and to clarify, if you vote yes, you'd be voting to approve the rezone. If you vote no, you'd be voting to deny it, just to make that clear.
So, the yes would be the A3?
So, are we ready for a roll call? Vote?
I'd like to make a motion.
I second.
So, we'll go ahead with the roll call.
Is it a motion to approve?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Ori?
Yes.
Stevenson?
No.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saad Ashni?
No.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
No.
Thank you for your time. Any other communication from the council before? Nothing at this time? The vote was four in favor and three against, is that correct?
Five in favor.
Five in favor?
Four.
Four.
Four-three.
Four-three. If there is nothing further, I need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second communications from the public.
Communication? Have any communication for the public before we adjourn?
Yep.
This is something to bring up, I wanted to bring up to the city council, the dog catcher issue. I've had numerous complaints about how Greg conducts his job. Just over the weekend, we had a dog at the fort, well, it was Friday to be exact, had a dog at the fort, extremely dehydrated, no leash, no collar. I mean, it was around kids, and it looked like it was half-died. I called Greg, said, hey, you need to come take care of this dog. His reply was, it'll find its own way home. A few months ago last year, we had photo evidence of piles of dog feces and urine, oh, and kennels on the outside that looked like they'd been there for at least two months.
Hold it up. All right, better?
Yes.
Okay.
So, repeating about the two months at least worth of dog feces and urine, and the kennels themselves, we have, it's getting to the point now to where, you know, I work a full-time job, I don't get home till four or five in the evening, and then I'm receiving numerous calls that, hey, Greg doesn't want to come get this animal, can you come get it? So, I have, you know, my Jeep's got a kennel in the back I had custom-made to foot animals.
Sir, what is your name, real quick, sorry?
Oh, should have started with that. Andrew Turnpaul.
And are you animal control officer for the county?
No.
Okay.
Nope. And it's, I don't know what needs to be done, if he needs, you know, someone else needs to work out there, or he needs to be replaced entirely. I've mentioned this all over Facebook multiple times, people contact me multiple times about what's happening, and I just thought I'd bring it up today at the meeting.
First of all, this is unrelated, but I'll go back. Super job on the cruise last night, you and, I believe, your mom and Jim?
Yep.
You guys put that together, that was fantastic. Okay, now, I just didn't want to forget that, because that was really cool.
Not bad for 24 hours' notice.
We really enjoyed it. But I thought Chief Feller, if Greg's not available, don't they recommend that people contact, or does he not contact the police department to say, hey, we got a stray dog?
Sorry, can...
Okay.
That's accurate, yes.
Yes.
Okay, and they often will go pick up the animal and take it to the facility?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we've met with plenty of officers. You know, you call dispatch, if Greg is not available, he will, an officer will come and get it, but it's to the point now to where I only meet officers. That's all I have at the moment.
Okay.
No one answer any questions, anybody has?
Yeah, I would just offer to give you this bit of information. Greg reports to me. If there's an issue with one of my department heads, I certainly want to know about it. So, contact the office. I would love to sit down with you at some point and find out what, what complaints you want to air with me, and I will do my best to get those taken care of.
Okay. I, no offense, you know, Don, I, the last mayor that we had, I aired my affairs to him, and he goes, I'll look into it.
Okay.
And still here.
Thank you. I would appreciate your time, though, and hearing what you have to say.
Yep. Need to make an appointment with you anyway, we want to talk about the cruise and get more things approved for it.
I'd love to do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have to ask something very quickly.
Yes.
So, it's gotten to the point in Miami County where anytime there is any type of injured stray animal, people are reaching out to us. My name's Laura Turnpaul, I should have said that. So, my husband and I are constantly dealing with stray animals, because people are calling animal control, nothing's being done about it, and Mayor, we both individually have reached out to you. My husband has actually already had a phone meeting with you several months ago, so we have been bringing this up. We have been, you know, talking to people and trying to, you know, just come up with some kind of resolution, you know? We have no hate towards Greg, it's not about that. Like, I actually tell people, like, Greg was my softball coach when I was, you know? So, you know, I have nothing but, you know, I want the best for him, I want the best for all of the animals in Miami County, but at this point, it's not happening, you know? I don't know if, like he said, I don't know if we need, you know, more people in there, but as, you know, somebody who sponsors rescues, rescues a lot of animals, you know, I don't feel like, as a community, we should have to go in there and volunteer our time when Greg's being paid to do it, and he's not there. For instance, he is my aunt's neighbor, I know where Greg lives. Nine times out of 10 during normal business hours, that brand-new truck that he has is sitting in that driveway. When you call up to animal control, you can't get a hold of him, it's because he's at home. So, you know, that just kind of looks poorly on Peru, that we have an animal catcher who's not out doing his job, and people in the community are having to step up and do that.
I agree, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry to hear that, but I do appreciate you giving that bit of information. I'm, I have made an attempt to work with some council members to see if we can get some volunteers to help within animal control, because I know there are a lot of people who care about the animals that are left alone out there, and to see how we can get some of that help within the, within the animal control umbrella, because we do need help, and I will not, you know, discount that for a moment, we do need help.
Another thing I want to add to that is the volunteer thing. You know, I work a full-time job. I do it until 10:00 at night, so if it's 2:00 in the morning, I do it. I should not have to volunteer my time for a man who gets paid to do that job.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, like the police officer said, you know, the police also do it as well, and I know the facility's small, I think seven, eight dogs at the most is what he can keep in there. And, you know, the multiple times we stop out there, you know, it could be 9:00 a.m., 10:00 a.m., 2:00 p.m., that gate's shut. He might be there, but that gate's shut. There is nothing online about dogs that may be up for adoption, and, you know, on Facebook, there's nothing about it. It's just, hey, we found this dog, someone claim it, but, you know, people do claim that, and the last time we were there to drop off dogs, there was seven dogs there I didn't recognize, and I was like, why aren't these getting adopted now? Why aren't we having adoption events or anything?
Once again, I appreciate your comments. I own it, I am the mayor, I hear reports to me, so I need to address it. Thank you for that. Anything further? Now, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
This meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everybody.